Good evening. I called over the July meeting of the Florence City Planning Commission. And as usual, on behalf of the Commissioners and the planning staff, I want to thank those that are here tonight. I always say that this is the people's business, and we really appreciate anybody participating in this. I made an acknowledgement last week about Ms. Heinz. She is, has resigned or retired from the Commission. She has been on this Commission since 1989. I wasn't even born then.
Yeah.
Well, I called her Mrs. Moses last month, so you know.
The Commissioners are not buying what you're saying.
Okay. I'm going to ask Mr. Moses to give our invocation.
Good Lord, we want to thank you for gathering here for the Planning Commission one more time. I want to thank you for all the blessings you have given us here to be in one body as one. I want to thank you for Commissioners making benefits for the citizens of Florence, South Carolina. I want to touch each and every one of us as we walk through this meeting, to be on the right page, be on the right line. These are the blessings that's in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Moses. The next item on the agenda is approval of last month's minutes. The Commissioners have received the packet, had a chance to review. And if there are no changes, corrections, or suggestions, I have a motion, and I'll have to ask for any discussion before we can pass. Hearing no discussion, I have a second. As submitted, all those in favor say aye. Like signs, nay, and ayes have it. The first item that involves a public hearing is PC 2023-15. This is a request to rezonate parcel located at 619 South Church Street. Ms. Elaine, good evening.
Chairman.
Yes.
I might excuse myself for.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. I forgot. You're right.
It's a conflict of interest.
All right. Would you mind sitting in the.
Well, before, so you don't bother moving, this has been, the applicant has requested deferral until next month.
Okay.
Well, I sit there. I keep myself.
You get to keep your seat. So, the PC 2023-15 is requesting for a deferral. Do we vote on that?
Yes.
All right. I'll call for a motion.
Move with defer.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it unanimously. All right. PC 2023-16. This is a request to rezonate two parcels located at 235 East House Springs Road.
This one is also a request to defer.
Ms. Elaine. I tell you what, this is my kind of meeting.
And it's not as bad as you thought.
I'll call for a motion. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Ayes have it. PC 2023-18. This is a request for sketch plan review. And we have Mr. Johnston.
Good evening, everyone.
In the batter's box.
That's right, in the batter's box. This is not deferred. We will hear this sketch plan. So this is for sketch plan approval for the Grove at Ebenezer, Phase 4. Here's a vicinity map. This is in between South Ebenezer Road and Interstate 95. There's the full parcel. Twenty-eight acres of this are the portion of Phase 4, seventeen of which will be developed. And this is part of the Grove at Ebenezer PDD. All right, so this kind of gives a breakdown of the previous phases of the Grove, Phase 1 and 2 and 3. You can see it on the map. It just kind of shows where Phase 4 goes in conjunction with the other phases. So the applicant is requesting sketch plan approval. This was actually annexed yesterday, City Council, 27.80 acres. It will, it is proposed to be 77 single-family detached homes. And the Planning Commission approved Phase 3 back in April of 2021. So 77 lots, this does, it's not RG3 zoning. It is PDD zoning, but it is kind of the model that we took for RG3. So they do have to meet the 60-foot lot width minimums, 6,000 square feet. And we did have to be cognizant of the power line easement that does run to the west of some of these lots. So to meet the minimum lot standards, we just wanted to make sure they can meet those 6,000 without including any of the power line easement. That land can be owned, but our ordinance is pretty specific. We want to make sure they meet the minimum yard requirements without using that property. So that's why we had the revision to the sketch plan. We wanted to make sure we meet those minimum numbers. And we do. The applicant is requesting, in light of the fact that they're kind of scrunched up by the easement, if they could get a variance request instead of the rear of 15 feet, they would request 10 feet in the rear to permit a larger buildable area. And this is just an extension of Summer Duck Loop, which is already been approved. So city water and sewer are available, and stormwater is also under city jurisdiction, and all that will be reviewed in greater detail for development plan. But at this time, this does meet the standards for the Grove at Ebenezer PDD standards.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Is that.
That concludes staff report. Sorry about that.
No problem. It seemed like we had this discussion last month about some minor discrepancies. All those with this revised has been taken care of?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Those were the issues, just making sure we met those minimum lot area requirements. And we do.
All right. Any questions from the Commissioners?
And you did say that this area was made part of the city on yesterday.
That's exactly right. Yes, sir. It was just annexed in. They do not have to go through Planning Commission as part of the PDD agreement, the development agreement. They go to City Council to get annexed. So it doesn't do the tradition of going through Planning Commission first. They jump straight to City Council.
So all of this was annexed, is that correct?
They have been subsequently. The latest one has been Phase 4. It was just annexed in, that approximately 28 acres.
Thank you.
How many of the lots are affected by the variance?
So it appears to be lots 7 through, let me look at the old staff report. Now, we do have the engineer available in the audience. He wants to speak to that. But it is, if we could put the sketch plan back up on the screen, and I've always wanted to use this little pointer on the podium, it will be these lots.
Just the.
At the top. This is the power line.
Five, nine, two, four.
The western portion of the parcel. So that would have to be part of this motion that they are requesting that rear setback variance for this phase from 15 feet to 10 feet.
Thank you. Any further questions?
How close are these lots to the power line?
They will, the property itself will encompass pieces of the power line easement. So it will include the power line easement. I believe the developer owns it now, but when he subdivides, he'll give a portion of the power line easement to each one of the single-family detached lot owners.
Under points to consider, has number 6 been, when I read this earlier, I thought it sounded like there was still work left to be done, but has that been done? Is that what this is?
That's what, that's the paper in front of you. Yes, sir. We did want to make sure we met those minimums, having respect for the power line easement.
Right.
And the developer and the engineer have done so.
All right. Any further questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
Move with approve.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. All right. PC 2023-20. This is a request to zonate NC 15 pending annexation. Ms. Elaine has been down the hall again.
This is a nice, simple infill parcel. Last year, a bunch of lots along Abbey Way and Parsons Gate were annexed en masse. This is one that kind of got away last time, but the owner has requested that it be annexed in order to build a single-family house on it. Water and sewer are available. It would be zoned NC 15, which is what the entire area is zoned, so it's in keeping with that. And again, it is just for a single-family house. Here's a picture of the lot. They just want to be annexed so they can get city services, and the city is all for it because it simplifies things quite a bit. So that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Elaine. Any questions of staff? We will have a public hearing. The way we do this is if there's anyone here that'd like to speak in favor or against this, we invite you to come forward, give us your name, go to the podium. And so I'll ask the question, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this request? Hearing or seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of this and call for a motion.
Move with approve.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second to approve any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it unanimously. PC 2023-21. This is a request to rezonate from PDD to AC off of Second Loop Road. Ms. Elaine.
And this is probably a case of déjà vu. Again, this is a parcel on the south side of Second Loop Road next to Logan Plaza, and it is one that about 30 years ago, through a variety of factors, ended up currently having split zoning, where the front part of it is zoned, Activity Center part that's along Second Loop Road, and in the back of it is zoned PDD. But we have absolutely no standards on that PDD. So as it stands now, the owner cannot develop this parcel. And so they are requesting that the remainder of it be zoned to Activity Center. And there's no development proposed at this time, but at the time of development, all of the standards of the ordinance would be in place, and that would include buffer yards and parking requirements and landscaping and all of that. So it would all be subject to the requirements and standards of the ordinance. So the future land use does give it a commercial designation for the entire parcel as well. And this is just the ordinance from 1989 and the map that came along at the time. But again, we have no design standards to go along with that HUD section. And these are site photos, looking every direction from it. When you're looking south, you see that the back of the lot is already landscaped, and there is fencing around it, and any development would be required to put a minimum 25-foot landscape buffer between it and any residential zoning in the back. So that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Ms. Elaine. For the Commissioners that remember this, it became, it came before us with a developer wanting to put either tax credit multifamily housing or maybe market rate multifamily housing. And we had a substantial number of the neighborhood here that were very uncomfortable with that use. And the developer also had difficulty in, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the developer needed additional access, which he was actually calling on the neighbor next door to see if there could be an access easement across his property. And from what I understand, that neighbor was not happy with doing that. And consequently, due to several reasons, the Commission turned down that project, but we accepted the AC designation, if I recall correctly.
That's correct. The first time you voted unanimously to approve the AC zoning designation, and then the second time turned it down.
Right. And can you remind us why we turned it down on the second time?
The second.
They withdrew before it comes to Council.
They withdrew their request?
Before it went to City Council.
I see. Okay. The thing that I think we need to be cognizant of is the future land use map shows the full site, you know, being contiguous rather than to split zoning. And so I think that was interesting. But we do have a public hearing with this. So again, if there's anyone that'd like to get up and speak in favor or against this, now will be your time to come forward.
Chairman, if I may add, I did want to make one point with this matter. The other route that the applicant could have gone is to develop the standards for that plan development, which would have left it a little messy as far as it would have remained split zoning, but we would have had, should everything get approved, we would have development standards for that plan development. It is certainly staff recommendation that we consolidate that and clean it up. One, because the existing development on that property within that plan development, so across the little access road, is commercial. So any development standards that would be created would have to be such that would allow what's existing to comply. So essentially, it would meet the current AC standards, what would have to be required to get approved for a plan development, should we have gone that route. But in an effort to clean the property up, make it more consistent with our current code, it is best practice to remove that plan development portion and consolidate that zoning district to Activities Center.
If I recall correctly, you couldn't find records of the.
That's right.
PD, and didn't know what it was really designed or designated to be.
That's right. What we do know is that it allowed commercial, given its current, the current uses that are on that plan development. But what we don't know are setbacks.
Yeah.
Buffer yards, any of those type development standards that would be required.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions for Mr. Moore before I close the public hearing?
AC allows what?
AC allows.
Most commercial uses, but again, they would have to have, they are required to be pulled forward and not have like a big box feeling. They would be required to be fronted along Second Loop Road and have parking and things like that in the rear.
And the, I would say that the buffer yard standards, the development standards that we have in our current code are much more substantial now with our new code as compared to the previous code, just in an effort to bridge these issues as far as, commercial development will end up beside residential at some point. And so our current standards are in place to help alleviate any of those conflicts.
Do we still have a good many of those split zoning issues from this era along Second Loop?
There, this, along Second Loop is, is pretty rare. There is along the, I believe it's along Alligator Corridor. Years ago, there was a large zoning effort, and essentially, they zoned, I think it was 1,000 feet deep into some of those properties, a certain zoning designation, and the rest behind it would be residential. So there's a few lingering out there, but most of it's taken care of itself.
Thank you.
The only reason this did not get corrected when we adopted the new zoning code was because of the plan development designation.
Okay. Mr. Howard, did you have a question?
Yes, I mean, it sounds like we're not doing anything that they couldn't do already, zone commercial.
We just don't know what the setbacks were.
They're going to know, right, but zone commercial. Now, the proposal is to zone the whole thing AC. They would still have to be front faced, which is what it would be currently, right?
That's right.
Okay. Any further questions? I will close the public hearing portion of this and call for a motion. Oh, excuse me. I didn't see you. You would have to come forward if you'd like to speak.
Okay.
Now, you can come right up here. Your name, sir?
My name is Matt Felice. I'm representing the owners of the 1714 Second Loop Road. And some of the points I was going to make have been already articulated as far as the history. But, you know, the owners of this property, you know, they're local business people, the doctor next door, yes, the cardiology office next door, they wouldn't want, they don't and would not want to see anything placed at this location that's, that's an obstacle or anything that's going to detract from the community. You know, they paid, they paid almost $1.2 million for this property 20 years ago, and have been paying taxes on it all these years, over $400,000 in property taxes during that time. Currently, it's about 2021, it was $22,000 they're paying in property taxes, and they really feel like their property's been kind of held hostage. They don't, they can't move forward. And some people would say, well, there's no, there's not a development plan. There's not a development plan right now because of what transpired before. But in order for the property to be marketed and sold to a potential developer, somebody with a new concept, they need to know what they can and can't do, and they don't want to deal with the degree of uncertainty and waste their time. And they really feel like the property's been almost essentially, our, in the domain that the city's exercising without compensating them, and they just want to be able to move forward and have clear-cut rules and regulations as far as what they can and can't do with the property. As has been already stated, the commercial, the AC allows a multitude of different purposes, some of which are permitted uses, some are conditional uses, but they all have to go through the regulatory process and everything from stormwater to landscaping and everything from A to Z. And they, you just would like to clean it, basically clean it up as far as the zoning. As already been stated, the PDD Plan District Development for residential purposes really doesn't make a lot of sense to begin with, residential, single-family homes tucked in in the midst of sort of commercial all around and having to travel to and from a commercial property to get, to get to the property. And since the two-thirds of the property is already zoned AC, they just want to be able to get the entire property zoned AC. And to retrace briefly, the previous, the previous process was approved, Planning and zoning approved unanimously, and then City Council tabled it, tabled the decision a couple times. During that time, what happened is the developer decided, he withdrew the, withdrew the request to develop the property because he missed the deadline for the state grants that were going to offset the, offset the reduced rents for the affordable housing. And it's, most of their tenants, they've talked to them recently, I mean, firemen, teachers, police officers, and other productive members of society that need, need a break and need a, need a help as far as the state grant, as far as reduced rent, the type of people they would rent to, the previous property, they're not in the conversation at this time at all. But it was only about 40, 40 to 50 units that were going to be built there, relatively low density on four plus acres. At this time, there's, we'd just like to get some clarity on what we can and can't do and provide by the AC regulations. Right now, there's not a, there's not a buyer that is buyer or developer that we're talking to, but we'd like to talk, talk to some people and feel like at the current guidelines, our hands are tied, and we'd just like our hands to be untied so that we can help some folks that might want to do something to contribute to the community. That's it.
Well, thank you, and you represent your client, clients very well, very well spoken. Could you spell your last name for me?
S-C-A-L-I-S-E.
Thank you, Mr. Felice. All right. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward and speak, either for or against? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Take a motion.
Have a motion, have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it unanimously. All right. PC 2023-22. This is a request to abandon a portion of sewer line and easement. And we've got the big dog of the day. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Commission. This is a request to abandon a portion of sewer line and easement located on private property 1411 Gulf Terrace Boulevard. This property is actually located outside of city limits. And to give a little bit of history, due to it being located outside of city limits, city staff was not involved in any approval process, and it was, we're not sure how, how it occurred, if it was left off of the submitted site plan or what have you, but a residential contractor built a duplex over the city sewer line. So in working with that owner, they have installed a new sewer line, and the highlighted green portion is the portion that we must abandon in order for them to finalize their title research and get, get everything cleared up so they can sell the property. In an effort to work with the developer, we held the first public meeting with City Council yesterday. It will go tonight, and then for final reading at City Council next month, so that they can move forward with closing on that.
Was that an active sewer line?
It was, yes.
I mean, you would think in the title work, you would see the easements, you would maybe dig in the foundation, you might hit a pipe or two, or?
It's, right now, it is eight feet deep, so it's, I'm surprised that it didn't collapse on them during the excavation process with the foundation, but thankfully it didn't. And thankfully, it was discovered during title research. They arrived before they were starting to set it closed. So again, this is, the green portion highlighted here is the area that we will be abandoning our interest in, and then the gray area is the new sewer line that has been installed, and we have recorded the easement on that. So any easement or interest in real estate has to go through this process. While the city can administratively accept new property or easements, city staff cannot administer any relinquishing of that real estate. So we're through this process.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Moore?
I got one. Could you put the picture back up?
Yes.
We had a straight sewer line going through there. Now we got two breaks, one that way and one that way. What kind of pipes he have it in in case we have a clog up, back up in that, that situation?
What kind of pipes are they?
What, what can, it does do to prevent a clog?
Oh, so we've got a, we've got access by sewer manhole here.
On both sides?
Yes. So there is.
Oh, three sides. I'm going to say it's three because he made a curve in it.
That's right. There's a, this is, it's now located out in the street. We have a sewer manhole here, here, and here for access. So this, this meets all specifications and standards of the city.
Is that gravity or? Is that gravity or...
Gravity.
Any more questions?
You did say that the city council passed this on yesterday?
Yes, sir.
How often do they get ahead of us before, I mean, like that? Usually, it goes through us to them.
Yeah. Well, so in this matter, with abandoning our interest, we can typically what? Planning commission's role is to hold the public hearing portion prior to city council. But in an effort, again, to work with the developers so that they can close as soon as possible, we had city council take that action. And planning commission will review and send their recommendations. We will update the staff report should any... But it's certainly staff's recommendation that we...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right.
Move to approve.
Well, let me do the public... I will open and close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a second. I have a motion, a second to approve any discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. That was... We had a very lengthy agenda, but we got through extremely quickly tonight. I will call on Mr. Moses for a motion.
Well, I tell you what I do. I make a motion to adjourn.
I don't think we'll even need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. All those approve?
Yeah.
Wow. I mean, it's two about sewer line.
Ms. Gray reminded me that usually if there's any old or new business that we need to discuss, you know, now that there usually is, but...
Yes, we do not have any innovative business.
Okay. Thank you. Then we are adjourned?
Yes.